I received a letter from Government Finance Officers Association and I'm going to ask Colleen to come up and make that presentation. The award for excellence in financial reporting.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Mayor, receive the following letter. Dear Mayor Michael, we are pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019 qualifies for GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. When a certificate of achievement is awarded to a government, an award of financial reporting achievement is also presented to the individuals or department designated by the government as the primarily responsible for having earned the certificate. This award has been sent to the submitter as designated on the application. We hope that you will arrange for a formal presentation of the certificate and award of financial reporting achievement and give appropriate publicity to this notable achievement. A sample news release is included to assist with this effort. We hope that your example will continue to encourage other government officials in their efforts to achieve and maintain an appropriate standard of excellence in financial reporting. So I would like to present this, if I may, to the mayor.
And please thank all of your office employees for everything they do and for all of our departments for helping us taking this. It wouldn't be possible unless everyone was working together.
Well, thank you. I did have two of my staff here with me and I'd like to just mention everybody's names so they all get a little bit of recognition here. But with me, I have Jacob Weevil is the Assistant Finance Director and he really is the one that leads the charge and keeps everybody getting all the information that they need and works directly with the auditor and he's done a great job for us. Linda Lewis is also here today. Linda looks after, gosh, many things. She's the purchasing coordinator, so she looks over purchasing contracts, the hub documents, she looks after our fixed assets, does general billing and Linda's been here a long time and she's a wonderful person to have in our office. Some of the others, Richard Lancelotti is our tax collector, but also is the revenue supervisor, so all the revenues that come into the city go through that group and he does a great job with keeping up with all the revenues and the reports that come from the county for the taxes and everything. Under Richard is Candy Poole and Chase Russell. They're our frontline people who work with the public as they come in to pay their utility bills or any other bill that happens to come in. They're always smiling and kind and try to be as helpful as they can to all of our customers. Melinda Harris is our payroll guru. She pays everybody, she pays all of you as well and enters journal entries and reconciles bank statements and also does a great job for us. Kim Spates is the accountant for the Department of Public Housing. She keeps up with all of their books and their tenant accounting and also helps in the general, you know, whenever we need or she's available for all kinds of... She's kind of a jack of all trades and helps us with everything. And then we have Tanner Denton and part-timer Luke Melton that pay all the bills for the city and boy, there's a lot of invoices that come in and get processed every year. And all of these people have specific jobs that they have to do to prepare for this audit and for the financial statement presentation and I appreciate each and every one of them. We also appreciate your support, but we are thrilled once again to receive this award for the third year and hope that it just continues on and on. Thank you.
Adam number three, approval of the December 5th, 2020 regular and close meeting minutes. Motion by Councilmember Hall, with second by Councilmember Hall for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thanks to the agenda adjustments, Ms. Hall. Thank you, Detective.
There, I'd like to place under, probably under new business, the temporary commercial sign, some information that has passed out to you tonight just to look at. And there's several items that I asked to have put on the agenda, though it wasn't by the close of business on Tuesday, it was before midnight, and Cindy accepted them. Thank you, Cindy. Some of them got dealt with and we will update. Some of them didn't and are on here in different places, but I will add those during, at the end with my comment that might, maybe this will be my time just because they're so spread out. That's the only thing I have.
Ms. Hughes, I'll thank you, everyone.
Yes, I'd like to go into closed session after our meeting for personnel.
I'll entertain the motion. Motion by Councilmember Hall to add to closed session. Second by Councilmember Woodley for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I have none in the mound, delegations, administrative boards. Adam Typer, LKC Engineering, discussing sanitary sewer re-escalation phase three. Figure, doing parking lot.
Yeah, they were tailgating. We are moving on. That's okay, I should remind you to start at six o'clock. We are moving on. Just go anywhere. We were not waiting, we just, just...
So, so thank you, Mayor, and again, my apologies. I'm embarrassed and apologize. So I will keep this somewhat brief tonight. Appreciate for your time, always thankful for the opportunity to be here. What we're doing is really closing the loopholes and discussions we've had in the last few months. If you remember, in June, we talked to you about the phase three scope and making some adjustments, so we're kind of closing the discussion on phase three so we can then move forward with implementing that project. But just to give you a little historical background, in 2009, you developed a system-wide plan for your gravity sewer system that focused on where are the problem areas and where do you need to make your largest capital investment and in what order. That plan recommended really five main phases and it's no, should be no surprise that the first two of those phases have been completed recently. The third phase is the phase three, the pipeline piece that we are planning to do as part of phase three, and then phases four and five in that study were your east Alamoal, or two, your primary east Alamoal outfall and then another piece that connects and serves the five-point period. So what we're going to, are going to talk about here is there an interest in continuing some investment relative to the plan that was developed in 2009? And as you can see, the phase one, phase two, phase three, those are non-used subjects to you and those were put together specifically in accordance or closely in accordance to that plan. To give you a real brief background of what phase three was when we applied a year ago, if you remember, so it really had, it was a $6.1 million project. It had two pieces. It was a pipeline replacement on the west Alamoal piece and it was years two and three electrical improvements at the wastewater plant. And from a cost standpoint, the cost between these two bullets, yeah, between this bullet and this bullet were almost 50/50. I mean, it was about half pipeline work, about half work at the wastewater plant. So we came to you on June 1st and for the first time, we talked to you in June, we talked to you in August, and we talked to you in September about some changes at the wastewater plant, comprehensive improvement project. And in June, when we first talked about it, we did not make a decision relative to the comprehensive project, but there was some decision relative to removing the years two and three electrical upgrades from this project and that, that was the direction you gave us. And so if you think about it right now, if working together, phase three kind of consists of about $3.2 million worth of pipeline rehabilitation based on removing the years two and three electrical. However, you have $6.1 million in available funds. So what we're going to talk to you about tonight is, is there an interest in continuing an investment according to the 2009 plan? And if so, we have some recommendations on where that should be made? And do you want to, instead of spending, I always feel bad using these terms, just $3.2 million, that's not fair to say, or do you want to spend something more to that and continue investment in the plan? Sorry, I went in the wrong direction. So this is the phase three map. This is what has currently been committed for phase three and just to refresh, north is to the right on this actually. So you see the wastewater treatment plant is down here and following, I guess that's Little Long Creek, I think, maybe that's Long Creek, but 24-inch outfall up and then some 12 there, north of, north of Main Street. And this, this map was presented last year also. I'm sure this is going backwards here.
No, that was next.
Was that next?
Phase three, that was next.
Yeah, okay, this was next, so forgive me. So as I mentioned before, you have $6.1 million of available funds for phase three, so the real question here is, do we want to consider adding to the gravity sewer scope in accordance with the plan that was developed in 2009? And we have confirmed with the funding agency that they would let you spend up to the full $6.1 million if you so choose. So the next recommended phase is what we call, and what your staff refers to as the east Alamoal, 24-inch outfall. It follows, I'll have a map of it here in a minute, but it kind of follows the south part of town and over to the bypass and up that direction. The scope that we have, we have also done a significant amount of field work, I'll show you in a minute, that confirms that this is really the next place that you should invest to continue the rehabilitation of your system, is the next best thing of your buck, and your staff's feedback support that also. The piece that we are, that we've worked with your staff and said, well, this makes the most sense to do next, which is in accordance with 2009 plan, so that phase four and five, I'll show you in a minute ago, if we added that into the budget, it would take it up to $5.53 million. So what that means, before, we'll come back to that number in just a minute. So I mentioned before that our field data supports that this is the next best place to invest. So we spent from about, well, let me see, from mid-February up until early June, our team working with your staff deployed tracking devices inside manholes at strategic locations to watch how the flow inside the sewer lines goes up and down based on rain. This evaluation takes time. For one, you have to wait for it to rain, right, and wait for it to rain the right amount. So this is just a snippet of what you can see back in mid-February up through the first part of March. So each one of these lines is probably a day in time and again, this is just one piece of the data, of six months' worth of data we collected. But this orange line you can see here is the east Alamoal line and we can, you can see how on these particular rain events, this one spiked more than the other. And so this is, this is just one data point of one, one of the valuation, but what we were looking at, we had six months' worth of data to track this for us so we could confirm, while working with your staff, we could confirm what the 2009 plan said of if we wanted to invest additional funds, where we need to do it. So we have some significant data that backs up the area that we are, that we are suggesting. On a map, and again, this map, north, north is up actually on this map, this is the bypass right here, this is the railroad, this is 50, let's see, this is 52, bypass, this is 52, excuse me, excuse me right there. Yeah, sorry, this is, this is 52 Business here, here's the interchange. So the piece we're talking about that we would recommend would be the red and the turquoise color.
The red line, the 152 is right out of ALI, probably, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And Old Charlotte red.
That is correct.
Is that right?
Below the Old Charlotte red.
Below, south of Old Charlotte, yes. Yeah, so the red line is the east Alamoal line and then the turquoise line on the top of the page going to the northeast is, was what the 2009 plan referred to as phase five, which that line runs up and serves most of the downtown area here.
That goes from Old Charlotte to Inglewood? Is that what I'm saying?
That is correct, yes. Inglewood is here. And then the 2009 report actually suggested that this line continue up and be replaced, but since then, a lot of this work has been done, except the manholes have not been replaced. So also included in the scope is the replacement of a lot of the manholes. That's the dark blue circles. Here we go, bring them along, drop it. So the, the, as I mentioned before, this is kind of clings into loophole in some previous discussions. So pluses and minuses of doing this, I guess first, you do have a 2009 plan that gives you, gave us, and gave your staff kind of a roadmap of how we should start this rehabilitation process. So if there's an interest in continuing and investing in that plan at this point in time, this is the next best place to do it. If you combine this with the other current phase three, so you do get some noticeable economies of scale relative to administrator, engineer, contractor, whatever, head costs, certainly doing these two projects is one versus doing two separately, you can understand how that works. And this would be the last large diameter outfall of significant age in your system after the phase three line, we lumped this one into it. Everything else of your 24 inches and above is newer in history on the northern side of town. The downside, there's an additional debt load. If you remember, the project cost going from about $3.2 million to about $5.5 million, we certainly are not ignorant of that. And also in light of, it's possible, or I said likely, you would be considering other projects of significance in coming budget years and sort of factoring that in, at this point, we respect that also.
Remind me of the terms on this loan.
This loan is a 20-year, 1.38 percent. It is not 0% in the membrane on this one.
And how many years lasting will be currently on your line?
This particular loan has not, yeah, has not been closed.
So that one hasn't gone?
Correct. It would not close until, just following the normal pace of the project, it'd probably hit your fiscal year '24, '23 or '24 budget. So the mayor and the council members, really what we're seeking is, we want to answer questions and make sure that we are working together and if you're inclined, we're just seeking some direction, one way or the other. There's no urgency relative to whether you stay at 3.2 or whether you increase the scope. There is some urgency relative to the decision because the phase three funding has been allocated for some time and we've been keeping the funding agency at bay while these decisions were being made, so there is some urgency to making the decision.
But the consent order encourages us to do this in addition to what we need to do with the funding, correct?
That, I would agree with the way that's worded, yeah. It does not mandate this particular project, but it does encourage this type of investment, correct?
Ms. Hall?
Back to the consent order. Does it include 4.5?
It is not.
Okay.
It includes three.
It includes three, so that leads me to the next question. Currently, the funding source is we can still get up to $6.1 million.
Correct.
So we're still, even if we were to increase the 3.2 to 5.5, we're still under what we have there for these particular projects, number one. And we're set still at 20 and 1.38. Is that right?
All right, yes.
I guess the question that I have would be to Judy and it might be, it's sort of to Judy, yes, yes or no, or it might be to Nikki or it might be to Colleen. So where does this, with this enterprise fund entering into this, how does this affect anything on down the line as was just mentioned? Going from 3.2 to 5.5? Because we're incurring the same amount, not the same amount, money, but for a longer period of time, or maybe not, it might be the same period of time, just a different amount each year. How does that affect something that we want to guess for capital, for capital with this enterprise fund? And that might just be too heavy to ask.
Yeah, I, I really haven't looked and was not prepared to answer you.
Okay.
I was just saying to Judy, you know, we're going to have a meeting with our financial advisors and we can bring all of this in and get better information. I hate to figure and tell you something.
So back to the thank you. No, thank you for that, that's honest, I mean, that's just who we are. So you said that there's no real time, Adam, about, I mean, we've got them in the hole for $6.1 billion. When would you say that we, we do need to let them know?
Well, I hear Ralph breathing in too, so we have, I appreciate that, we have, there were submitted requirements for the phase three funded that the, when the funding was awarded in February, the submissions would do in July.
Okay.
So we put, had pushed that off because of the wastewater plant discussion which the state encouraged.
Right.
We are now going to have to push that off again and we, it takes time to develop the data that we showed, so the state understands that. I would expect that the, you know, this meeting or the next meeting, if we go much longer than that, the funding agency is probably going to come back and say, look, we really need the city to make a decision so that we can either continue this money where it is or reappropriate it somewhere else.
Okay. The last follow-up question is, consent order talks about through three, right? So we got to do that, we got to do that. Four and five, we need to do, so that we, in my opinion, this is just an opinion, everybody has them, is that so we don't have to enter into a consent order for what four and five are covering. I mean, if we allow things to continue without going to do it, then we may in fact get a consent order there, my assumption would be. Is that based on what it is?
I'm not sure if that's an appropriate way to think about it. So the consent order that you have, the property has been signed by EMC, that the city has approved yet, or so far, it does specifically reference the phase three project.
Right.
And then it of course has the bullet that says, you must become, you must commit compliance.
Right.
So it's not just do this and you're done.
Right.
It's here is the expected path to compliance and then if it's done and you still not comply, then there's going to be more to this.
Right.
And the more to this would start with, with this type of discussion, four and five.
Okay. Does that, that answer it? Thank you.
Go ahead.
So this was, Mayor, this was all the information we had. Wanted to answer any questions that you may have and...
Councilmember, a further question.
Yeah, I had one, I think it's kind of along the lines of Councilmember Hall, but that one didn't have the word.
That's okay.
So we made the determination of fully electorally part out phase, this phase, but apparently that's a more critical portion. So these two last lines, the one we're looking at and here, and the next one down there, how critical are those? I'm trying to get him on that priorities and along with what she was saying, does this create a problem for us when we're looking at doing the larger wastewater project as far as dead capacity and those types of things? Well, we, since the electrical part of it, at least apparently is one of the more critical pieces in the whole system. So I'm not sure that's a question, I think I was just trying to...
Yeah, so I think that the, so our staff, I mean, not personally, but our staff, Rob and our field folks have walked this phase four and phase, phase five lines and have seen some signs of some fairly significant failure. And I believe that here that Brian and his staff would, would support that above and beyond what I just said. In fact, some of the meetings we've had about this, I think Bron maybe was one of the more outspoken individuals about what this needs to be done, that needs to be done soon, whereas we wanted to, I'm always cognizant, Mayor, I want council to feel like they have decisions and can, can decide on their own time. So I don't think that this is something, Mr. Woodley, that is mission critical. I think that it is something that, if there's interest in staying committed to the 2009 plan, it makes good sense to do it now. Doing it now versus doing it as part of a later funding application is going to cost less now than it would then, but this is kind of a multi-layered discussion. Sorry, Mike, I almost interrupted you on that.
Adam explained it well. We, even prior to the special order of consent, you know, we were on a path to do phase one, I and I rehab, phase two. Phase three was already the work, something when the SOC came along, so, because this was part of the 2009 plan that identified significant problems with some of these larger lines. So as Adam said, there's obviously some economies of scale. Really, I think if we don't take it at this point, I don't know, there's a lot of reason to, if we didn't change the previous grant and remove the electrical rehab, we would have done that project and then the next phase would have been this. This allows it to move up, so as Adam put very succinctly, you know, this is the next phase in that process, it's also the last phase of our large outfall lines. These are all things, the questions that I asked and we talked about when we met. And so Adam's, prior, our water sewer system superintendent, Brian Henson, feels like this is really getting them, at least on the high, high side, where we've got the big projects taken care of, we have quite a bit of work that goes into each year just in terms of regular maintenance upkeep and there is, I think, beyond this, then we start moving into some of the other things on water and sewer capital needs, like we did talk about, you know, potentially the deep water intake, the tuckers, the raw water line, we can pass this, then we move on to some of those issues.
I just would like to place on the table a motion that in order to stay on target with that 2009 plan, I mean, that we've moved forward with phases three, four, and five, increasing the project budget from 3.2, which was just three, to 5.538, which includes three, four, and five, is that correct, Adam? And that's just firm... And that's just firm motion for discussion. Is that okay?
Have a motion and a second, further discussion.
We had our, in five years I've been on here, each year we do a very comprehensive budget study of all the projects and that sort of thing that we have. And in that study, we have, say, if we, if we spend 3.2 million at this point, it's going to require a 3% increase to the, to the property tax and that.
So I mean, this does not take property tax at all?
I, I, yes, but it is a tax.
But it's water and sewer rates.
Anything that the community pays to us can be considered a tax or what have you. We can call it another name, but, but it's going, it's going to increase the amount of money that the people pay to us that we know from that study that we've been doing year after year after year, exactly how much this is going to add to what the homeowner has to pay.
True.
So just real rough--
Yeah, make myself clear.
Yeah, because that, I understand, right? Because, you know, that's, that's the way we've got to look at it, how, you know, how we're going to pay for it, and the money's got to come from somewhere.
Right.
So, you know, we've got, it has to come from our users of the water and sewer system. So just right here, generally speaking, about a 1% increase in rates generates a little over $100,000 in water and sewer revenue. It's very similar to what podcasts bring in, but we're talking about water and sewer rates here. So, you know, this is 20 years, you know, it might be, just real rough looking at this, could be the equivalent of 3 cents on the, on the water and sewer rate. Now, that's all things sort of holding constant. We've got other changes that go on within our system. For example, Concord, the Napples are taking a fair amount more water than they had been, so we've got more revenue in that area. That could mitigate other rate increases. But if you're looking at it strictly against the rate, it is somewhere around 1 cent, 1% rate increase brings in just over $100,000 in water and sewer revenues.
And this, and general fund, if I may, General Fund does not touch this because it's an enterprise fund.
That's correct.
And I, I understand that. I just, but, but anything we do can add to the budget, but it can create what the homeowner has to pay of a citizen of Albemarle. And I guess the reason I'm saying that is that all of a sudden here, we had no warning, all of a sudden we're going to drop the electrical component that's some million, $2 million, whatever. Why are we doing that?
That was part of the presentation a month, two months ago, and council chose that night to drop the--
The, the electrical issue.
This was started in 2009. So in 2009, the electrical part was considered integral to the total project. Now, 11 years later, we're deciding it isn't. What happened?
We're not saying it isn't. You're making the decision later on the other plan that they brought us that will mean we will not do all those electrical upgrades, we will change the type of process.
The process changed and the plan takes care of the, for the electrical rehab. It's just a different way of addressing the problem. So the issue is resolved, it's just not resolved as the electrical rehab is resolved because the process changed the plan.
The one thing that bothers me, I guess, in all of this, I think the world is this man and this policy. They explain things well, I like the way they do things, and that sort of thing. But I keep thinking we don't have an engineer on our staff that sort of looks at our side of things. We, we have, we have this gentleman who is a great salesman, I got to hand it to him. But, but he doesn't work for us. And we don't have our side, our advocate, looking over his shoulders to say, hey, we really don't need that, but we do need that, that sort of thing. And I guess that that's what gives you just a little bit of angst as I consider this kind of thing, because we don't have an insider for us who might present a completely different viewpoint.
Well, I would just--
We don't, we don't know that there's 3, we don't know, we know about 3 million, 5 million, that sort of thing. We don't know, we don't know what that means. We just, we just don't know now.
Well, Chris, I mean, we've got associates out there who are work, I mean, these guys work in it every day.
I know that, but they're not an engineer there who, who can talk at his level.
I understand they may not have the degree, but sometimes you have to look at the years of service and, and working out in it every day sometimes can mean more than having a degree. I'm not disputing that, that it wouldn't be nice, but to me, this is why we have LKC. We're not a municipality that can afford to have on staff a lot of college people that kind of overlook everybody. So, I mean, we look for him, we pay them, this is what we pay them to do. But I'm also, I look for staff. These are the folks that are in the trenches every day, working for the city. And when they tell us things, I'm like, I want to listen to what they have to say. They're in it every day.
Well, what's the state telling us?
The state's telling us too.
When does staff run on meeting with first problem?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I didn't realize it was that soon.
And what we could have, we could hire engineers. So we would have to hire multiple engineers, because there's no way they're going to be up on water, sewer, electrical. One person's not going to be able to do all of it. So we would have to have multiple engineers, one of the reasons we have consultants, and we have consultants for landing.
I would like to put this off to the next meeting if possible, at least have some recommendations after finance department have a chance to speak with first problem.
I have a motion, a motion and a second. You may have a substitute motion?
I will.
I have a substitute motion to relay this decision to the next meeting.
I'll second the substitute motion.
I have a second by Councilmember Ray. Further discussion.
Just would like to go back to Adam, if I may.
Sure.
Okay, Adam, two more weeks.
Yes, ma'am. And, and look, I think that having confidence and confidence in decisions is above all most important. Our urgency with the funding agency is below that, so it will make it work, right? I want for, for council and for staff to be confident in, in the decision they're going to make. So I wouldn't want to cloud the decision with urgency that, that we can figure out. My expression of timing earlier was just, there is a, there is a force to be directed with as it relates to getting the Phase 3 money moving. And we will figure it out. I think above that is supportive of council's, its confidence.
I can be clarified about what we're asking from first time, because first times already give us this with those numbers in there. We, we, we're doing the budget forward, this phase, so what are we looking for from first time?
Wait a minute.
The story was in our, in our preparations for first time, am I correct, Mike?
Four and five, just--
Phase 3 was $6 million. So we swapped out activities, but the price is still in the same range. So I think what the mayor's saying is a $6 million placeholder was in the budget.
Well, then why the need, if we're still on that substitute motion, then why the need for the question to be there if we've already played that 6.1 in there as a, as Michael says, a placeholder? If we feel comfortable, and I'm looking at Colleen, and I can't see she's doing that, if that placeholder of 6.1 is already there, then we already know. It's just being used in a different way to be inclusive of a new 3 or a continuation of 3 and 4 and 5. I mean, I don't mind.
I really feel like it, it was a reason that we can't go back and look at the minutes right now for a while when we dropped that mighty part of the electrical green. But now, I don't know if we've done it for cost, you know, try to reduce debt, the debt amount alone, or what, but I just feel like we're rushing into this decision that we process here tonight.
I, I think, I, I think I agree with that. If the, the, all of a sudden, with any, without any form, anything to warrant some of this, we're talking about millions of dollars. I'd like to spend at least two weeks, and we're talking about spending millions of dollars, I'd like to at least spend that and stop mulling it over and seeing if that's, that's really what we wanted to do.
And I have no problem with that. We do want to say, you've heard this months before. This has come to us before, so you, we've known this was coming. The reason it was, the reason the electrical was dropped that night was the discussion on whether we're going to change the process at the wastewater plant. That's the reason we just dropped it that night while we make, and we're, I'm assuming, and I'm, this is making an assumption, that the most I heard that night was on the one that spoke against that process. So if we're looking at changing that process, you would not do the electrical at the wastewater plant.
But just for clarification, and I'll, I'll vote for holding over, okay? But for clarification, we're not talking about any additional money.
No.
And that's what I think is, we're not talking about, that's already been approved, is that amount of money. But I understand that, and I will respect extras wanting to hold off and do whatever, but we're not talking about any additional money.
Further comments? I have a motion second on floor to lay it to the next meeting. All the favors say aye. Over the button. My motion carries. Adam, we will talk about it at the next meeting.
And our sincere apologies for sitting in the parking lot over the first--
We're starting, we started from now on.
I have one more question I was going to ask you, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Do we, we've been doing sewer lines since I was on council, possibly because we couldn't not leave. But do we know how much of the reduction we get in 9-1-1 when we finish 1 B project?
It's, it's really hard to say that with certainty. Because what's happening is while we are fixing some major problems, we continue to see degradation in other areas, so you're always in a, one step forward, one step back. However, when we finish Phase 1, this would have been, I remember presenting, maybe in early 2015. At that time, there was about a one year, maybe 18 months period, Bron, I remember, when the wastewater plants still received similar peaks, but they would drop off real fast. So it would rain, the flow would spike, and then within a few hours it would drop back down. Whereas before we did Phase 1, it would rain, the flows would spike, and they'd stay up for 18 to 24 hours. So there, when we track data points like that, there, there always are some warm fuzzies about, yes, this is helping. But it's a, it's a systemic issue, it's really hard to say with certainty to answer that question, so.
Adam, you know possibly how much contingency we, we have built into--
Into-- Into this?
Into this project.
So of all, all the construction projects that we present to you, I always have a 10% contingency added on to the construction. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Adam.
And our apologies. Thank you.
Number five, our chief can approve the updates on processes from fire response outside the city.
Mayor, council? I presented the city manager with a memo based on a question that was asked in previous meeting. The memo pretty much stated the three terms for responding without, without being called. Is there anything in, well, specific that you might need to hold?
Council, do you have a specific question you would like to ask?
I guess I try to be transparent to the folks that are watching this now, or the folks that will watch it tomorrow. So, yes, it's given to us on this, and if first people didn't open up the agenda, they wouldn't have this. Can you tell us what those are or explain those so that if somebody is watching it?
Not a problem.
Thank you. So I think that's where a lot of, now that we don't have people coming in, I think, and it's available to people right now, I think we're having a lot of people watch what's going on.
Based on previous conversation in earlier meeting, council asked me to review anything that may, that may allow us to respond to calls outside of our jurisdiction without being requested. There are three titles that you have to look at when you are responding. One, if it's outside of our jurisdiction, we, we have to be under a mutual aid contract, an automatic aid contract, or if we are out and about, should I say, we're looking at, if we roll across it, there we are, or if it's in plain sight. If we respond without any type of, I hate to say the word limitation, but if we respond a lot on forward, then we're in violation of our mutual aid, automatic aid agreements. We are then taking on the liability and responsibility outside of our jurisdiction.
Actually, I requested you to look into this matter, and I appreciate you doing that. I would say to start with the memo, pretty much whenever I ask that, you know, because my overall goal was to try to bridge any kind of gap, working with the volunteer departments and that, that next area. And if nothing else, at the end of the day, hopefully just a main intention to the matter that we can have a more collaboratively, work, work, work with, you know, like with Bethany and wherever else the volunteer agencies and that, you know. I just don't want to run under those circumstances, put the citizens of Albemarle at risk because of, I guess, more lack of better words, politics and country coverage.
Understood. And I, and I definitely agree with you, counsel, when mutual aid, automatic aid, those are terms that are widely used in, in command sequence, and that is nationwide. Being able to respond is an addition, is a help to all departments under public safety ties, whether you're police, EMS, and particularly fire. So understanding that these agreements are really important, it is also understandable that bringing these, these things to light, especially if the contracts are vague in a lot of, in a lot of sense. So the vagueness brings about questions. The questions bring about unresolved issues. So it is going to take time to be able to look at these, look at these, look at these, look at these mutual aid, automatic aid contracts in order to build in for a better response criteria, not only for the first responders, but for the citizens that we serve. So right now, we are in the process of looking at several opportunities to increase not only response out, but to also increase equal response in.
How long would that take?
Now, now, counsel, I can't answer that question because that is a county situation. Unfortunately, I'm a spoke in the tire on that, and I, but we're in the middle of the week. So it falls back into a joint agreement and conversation. And we only had conversation based on the meet and criteria, and at that point, it's moving on to other, to other topics.
Mr. Allen?
Chief, thank you again for, for the information. Is it safe to say, do you know if the, if most of the county volunteer fire agencies, do they have an automatic mutual aid agreement amongst themselves? Either--
There is a mutual aid agreement and automatic aid agreement. It depends on, and we are part of that consortium as well, it just depends on how we're listed on the call out. So--
How we're listed on the line?
How we're listed, I'm sorry, how we're listed on the call out.
Okay.
Meaning, when the call comes into 911--
Sure.
At that point, the dispatcher has a particular run card that they look at and look at who is responsible for responding to that particular call and how the nature of the call. It can be as simple as an outside fire. Well, an outside stroller fire, well, is it a garbage can fire, or is it a fully, a garage fire unattached? So it truly depends on the nature of the call and how, and how it's dispatched. That's no, we just have, we, going back to the contracts, we have to be able to-- That's no, we just have, going back to the contracts, we have to be able to spell out exactly what's needed, what we're looking for, and the criteria in which we respond.
Well, council member, counsel, the, the situation he was talking about last meeting is, it's very unfortunate on the Northeast Connector, the way the, the, the city and county lines are drawn there, but in that specific situation, you know, when the accident occurred, you could actually see Station Three up there was in, was in, you know, basically plain view, and we had to wait for Bethany, I guess Bethany to come down and turn right in front of our fire truck to respond, and unfortunately, it was a, I think a double fatality. Not saying that, that if we would have gotten there any sooner, that the outcome would have been different, but I can only imagine as a, somebody that weren't involved in a situation like that, I would be jumping the dam, whoever, I don't care what names on the fire truck or where they came from, just to get us some help, so I think that was, I think that was a little bit.
Yeah, and just for clarification, we wasn't fussing at the Alamo Fire Department. I'm looking at the memo where it says why we did not respond to a fatal model. I guess we were looking for why, why assistance wasn't asked from our Alamo Fire Department, you know?
By bad name?
Yeah, correct, correct.
It sounds like, Chief, that we need to look at jurisdictions instead of.
Jurisdictions instead of?
Clarify what you're talking about, Ms. Lauer, please.
If jurisdiction has, hasn't classified as somebody else that is within, just like Bill said, sitting within sight, instead of going on and doing it, what's wrong with the jurisdiction if?
Because in that particular case, Ms. Lauer, it responded inside the city limits, and this was actually about two hundred foot outside the city limits, so by 9-1-1, Kyle Sanders, they would not dispatch us because it was not in the city.
Same, same thing happened in that stretch of the Northeast Connector, same thing happens all the time. If somebody hits it there in the automobile, depending on where it's at on the Northeast Connector, you've got the highway code respond, you've got the city police to respond.
Because it goes in and out, the connector itself goes in and out of city limits.
Correct.
Further question? Thank you, Chief, for your time. Number six, another annual Florida project, Ms. Lauer.
Well, I think this is a, you and I, Mayor, if you want to start or I will, I don't care.
Go ahead.
Uh, we had a meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago, a Zoom meeting, and there were about eleven folks from within the county. Um, a lot of discussion of, um, the dedication of it, and we can't really think about the dedication until there's a groundbreaking, and that was the time, we thought the groundbreaking was going to be end of October, and now, as I understand, it's going to be probably the end of November.
Third week in November is the last time I was, date I was told.
Um, but I will tell you, a lot of excitement from folks in the community who were on that call about the educational components and the educational opportunities once it is set up and those kinds of things. It became very clear to us, and again, I will reiterate, there will be some opportunities for folks to financially and in kind make some donations, but it's not mandatory. Um, I was thrilled that Vicky Calvert was on the call with us from, as it's currently, or I think she's currently the inner superintendent Steel. Uh, the West End and Brick Lane folks are going to be able to take part in it, so it's really going to be a hands-on, um, opportunity. There was a, a discussion, though, because there were folks, even though it's been given to the city, that the city is within the county, that they're going to do a date in 2021 to do the dedication, something that is a date, and I look at Chris Brammer when I say this, a date of significance to either the city or the county as a whole, in order to sort of wrap that dedication around. Now granted, it's been given to the city here.
Let me make one correction. It is being officially given to the citizens of Family County.
That's, that's exactly what I was about to say.
Just to bring our property.
That's what I was about to say, Your Honor, that in many places, it is being given to the county and on county property and that kind of thing. But they're putting it on our property, and one of the big reasons is because of its close proximity to the museum right across the street. Yeah, I was on my way to that, honey, I wasn't going to leave that out, Lord, no. But that was part of the reason that we're looking for a date, even right now, into 2021, to look at the dedication of it, whether it's completed or not, some date that is, uh, has some significance to our county and to our city. So I'll throw that out there, Megan is part of the committee, so, um, a lot of different disciplines that are a part of that. The next meeting is going to be another Zoom meeting, um, on November 10th, and if there are folks that would like to be included in that, let me know. It's being directed by Jennifer McMillan with the Charters of Freedom.
And as soon as we get a groundbreaking date, I will let you know, because we would like to have all the council commissioners attend to do a groundbreaking if at all possible. Number seven, the Department of Labor reports are in your agenda, anyone has a question?
I, I just would like to bring some things against, having it all printed off in front of us with a lot of time, those of us that have to sit here without a computer, I see it a lot more. Um, the ADDC report, I will just, I'll add to, um, the Courthouse Square, the fountain update, I know that there was a lot of time and effort that went into that. If you all remember, we were trying to get the water gold, uh, in September. We tried everything in the world to get that water gold, but it wouldn't work because of the bottom of the, um, the bottom of the fountain is dark, and they couldn't figure out a mechanism and enough color to make it go, so they tried some other things to give that, um, that recognition to pediatric cancer. And I'm not so sure, I know it's still, I don't know if it's completely fixed yet.
The fountain is still not completely fixed, but the meeting this, this month, we talked about it, and they were going to try some more repairs, they have not got the leak stopped yet.
That's what I thought. Um.
The water, the fountain?
Fountain what?
The water's running themselves.
Oh, yes, running, but there's still a leak on it. Yeah, there's a leak on it. Um, and I just have an HR question, and I'm just throwing it out there, what is current voluntary turnover rate? What is voluntary key benchmark and voluntary, what is the comparison there?
So the voluntary turnover is the people that are leaving on their own, non-terminations.
And the key benchmark?
The key benchmark is the standard across industry, um, and the communities will have paternity, so my goal is to keep that under ten percent if at all possible.
Very good, that's, paid, just paying attention to it.
If I may ask, while you're on that topic, um, Dana, what is our procedure for individuals when they apply for a position with the city? If they send in an application, what, do they get a letter back that says, thank you for applying, we'll be in touch? What, how does that, what's kind of the?
They should at least get a, a recognition that we've received their application.
Okay.
And that goes into a folder for the hiring managers to review.
Okay.
Um, then the hiring managers, um, I work with them, sometimes I do phone screens for them, that's where they identify, let's say, three to five candidates that they want to bring in for panel interview.
Okay. Now, when you, so let's say you had ten apply, and you had four that you wanted to move off.
Right.
And the others you were no longer, they were not viable candidates.
Right.
Do we send out a letter that says?
At the end of the process.
Oh, at the end?
At the end.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
At the end of the process, when we've actually made the hire.
Okay, all right, just kind of wanted to get a thought process on that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just continuing on, I just would, um, just compliment the department heads in these reports, particularly when they're talking specifically about council priority, when they reference council priority, um, a specific issue that they're talking about. Um, I do believe there was, um, and the employee action leadership development groups, they're done, I mean, you got everybody in there?
Well, we just finished the, the first group of employee action, and that leadership development group, they've finished their curriculum, so by the end of this month, we'll be starting our next round of that.
And that's the, uh, the employee action group?
Yes, yes. And the leadership development training will start probably around the first of December, and that'll be a nine-month program, so we're getting those participants identified now.
And are we, and I saw what, um, openings we have, is one of those openings for the job that Rachel Huff had?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought, I was remembering saying that too. And I think that was all, Your Honor.
Moving to the consent agenda. Three items, orders 2027 to adjust the start time of the road remittings to City Council to 6:30. Number nine, orders 2028, a budget amendment to reduce Kyleville funding since our amount we will receive in the state this year has been decreased, we need to decrease that budget also. Hopefully, this is a final reduction we ever see, because over the last ten years, that has steadily been decreasing, and everybody knows that the cost of paving roads continues to go up, and it puts more and more pressure on our general fund. Number 10, consider a resolution for the legal representation of 530 Charlotte residents. Motion by Councilmember Oliver, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Unfinished business, consider a vote to the boards and commissions. We have one application this time for, and clear to me for the next item. We do not have any applications for the HRC that I am aware of.
Yes, it's in here, it's in the packet. Your Honor, Scott Patrick? Scott Patrick.
Anyone familiar with him?
Um, I don't know of it, he lives right here in town, I would just, I mean, I.
Lives up.
Yeah, he lives close to you. Um.
If we don't know, and no one knows, it takes me so long, I want to interview him.
Exactly, I thought I was beside Mr. Brammer, we need to, we need to donate a special for this vote.
Right, but I did see that there was one in here.
We know, he's, he's lived in, he's lived in historic homes and historic house in Concord, I think, fixed one up there.
I, I read that.
So that's his residence.
Um, and he lives there on PD, again, when I saw it in the packet, I could tell about where he lived, but I don't know him. He's been here, though, several years.
No, they just moved here recently.
Just recently?
But in this, in this information, it said he lived in the historic, in Concord for ten years.
That's years, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so ten years, there you go, ten years.
Counsel, wish to have, have you interviewed or?
Well, certainly, no worries.
Me, me personally, to get the, the there, to make the name even here, that's the purpose of putting out applications. You just sit 10,000 people in, sit at Alamo, seven, seven of us, I know everybody.
That's right.
I'm about to move forward.
I am too. Move him, move, put him on the HRC.
The most, my captain, Scott Patrick, for HRC.
Second.
Second, my councilmember Hughes, further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Do we have anyone for the second position?
We do.
Thank you, sir.
What, for the second HRC position?
Yes, ma'am.
No, we do not.
Kevin, have you got anybody on the horizon for that?
I, I think so, but we have, we, I believe Ellie said she did, we haven't gotten an application yet on the second one now.
Okay, so we'll leave that one.
The employees are trying to find somebody.
Next meeting, thank you.
And they got me again till, uh, the second meet, second weekend, November, so.
Moving to number twelve, consider replacement for Santa County Commission and Business Bureau, you have an application in your packet for that?
I'm moved that you accept the applicants.
Motion by Councilmember Brammer to set Tiffany Doll for the representation on the Commission and Business Bureau, such as by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Under new business, introduction of Chief Tom, City Ramon, Director of Economic Development. Keith, will you come up?
Yes, sir.
Michael, you want to make some notes in the car?
Sure, um, just glad to have Keith on board, started with us last Monday. As council knows, we went through a very extensive, detailed recruitment process, because it is a very critical position for the city, our residents, uh, currently and into our future, and, uh, we have residents from, we had applicants, uh, from all over, at least the eastern half of the United States, and so we did cast a very broad net, and were able to find somebody with a significant level of experience with Keith. He has worked in Sevierville, Tennessee, in economic development, he has, uh, worked many years in Lancaster, South Carolina, so very attracted to us, and he's done several projects similar to what we have going on here, including the Business Center, strong existing business retention program, and also a great deal of experience within the Charlotte region, which all is very relevant to our needs and our current situation, so he's very pleased to have Keith here. He started doing a lot of work before he even arrived here, uh, for, to report for official duty last Monday, and, uh, as they say, hit the ground running, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Keith.
Thank you, Michael, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Michael's covering everything, so I'll go sit down right now. I did have an hour-long speech, but I'll spare you that. It is a, it's a pleasure to be here, I'm very excited, uh, as you all saw from my resume, I've been in the private sector for about four or five years, and I can tell you, just in the last week or so, since starting, um, those juices have come back, getting back into the government side. Uh, the mayor's been very kind this time, uh, Mayor Ashley in Sevierville, you remind me a lot of people, you put a lot of time and effort into that. Uh, I can tell you that Michael and I will be reaching out, these are councilmembers in the coming days, to meet with you all one-on-one, and we have some other meetings coming up, I think, uh, some retreats that are coming, we'll get to each other a little bit better and discuss issues and vision and mission as we move this, uh, department forward. Uh, very excited about the downtown, I think there's a lot of opportunity here, opportunities already in place that we can grow from, and also, uh, first and foremost, is getting that business park completed, so that, uh, I can have a Class A industrial park to recruit to and bring good high-paying jobs to the residents of Alamo. With that, is the income that's generated from those jobs, we'll go into the downtown, it's all complimentary to one another. We're also going to focus on business retention expansion, not only on the industrial side, but on the downtown area and your commercial areas as well, and, uh, grow the staff so that they can be cross-strengthened in all phases of economic development, and we have a great, complete, uh, robust, uh, Main Street downtown program. So a lot of work to do, we're not going to do it all overnight, but, uh, I think as the mayor Michael's found out, that Monks doesn't grow under my feet, so we'll get things going quickly, and we will be very aggressive, very inclusive, and very successful as we move the, this plan forward forward for the city and the citizens of Alamo. I'm honored that you've put this trust in me, and I'm looking forward to getting started and getting going, and doing great things for the community.
Councilmember, any questions?
One follow-up, so, um, when you were last in government, was that in?
Well, I was the economic development director and president of the development corporation, so we had a county, quasi-county governmental agency that was also connected into a nonprofit, where sixty percent of the funding came from the government, and forty percent was raised in the private sector by union Dante.
And so when you were there, was that county part of the connect our future with Central Island Council, with Central Island Council of Government? When we reached into, when we reached into South Carolina to pick up those four counties?
Yes, that happened in the final tour for years that I was there, uh, we had a council member who was in the board.
Further questions?
Only question I'd just like to point out, that not only is it a grant for the East Tennessee State University, and private, to have something to do with.
Two others, as coincidences, but if you hire a third, it's a trend, so, uh, ETSU people are good people, they have good lungs.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, Mr. Fisher, power records, that is in your agenda, any comments on that?
Um, I have a few, uh, questions, if I may, um, so I was interested to know, kind of when we purchased these, and I guess, Michael, from looking at these sheets, I can see that if I'm interpreting this correct, the, the quality pumper, it says, I didn't know about it when we purchased it, and then there's a 2006 for an E1 pumper, 2012 E1 pumper, 2012 E1 pumper, and then 2001 for a ladder truck, is that correct? Are those the right dates?
That's correct, the only thing I might, I don't know the answer to, maybe Chief does, is that if we say purchase one, it takes five hours to build, so, you know, maybe we purchase it 2010, we can see it at 11.
Okay, okay. Um, question, so when we have an engine out of service, like I know this, this one is out of service at Crooks, what does that do for you and, and your? out of service at Crooks, what does that do for you and, and your team when we have something out of service?
Fortunately, we have a quality backup for that unit, so if we do have a unit to go out of service, then we pre-plan for that to occur.
Okay, and, and I know, you know, there comes a point, I think, and I'm sure this will be discussed in budget, when we get to a point where we're spending more on repairs probably, then it's time to decide to, I guess, purchase a new piece of equipment. And, and I know we've talked about this, I think, in budget sessions, but to Michael's point, so when we look at purchasing any kind of apparatus here that we might need in the future, what is a timeframe for something like that to be? I guess if we said tomorrow we want to buy A, like normal, what's just a normal timeframe?
Four and a half to six months.
Four and a half to six months?
Yes, that's.
Before we get whatever it is that we're looking at, okay.
That's correct.
Um, so, and you feel right now, even with this one out at, at Crooks, that everything is in good shape, working order, and, I mean, for what we have, for what we have?
It is returning.
Okay.
So if that is service.
Okay, all right. I think that's all the questions I have at this point.
Thank you, Keith. Number 15, discussion of Halloween night, is that I'm with you, Senator?
I did, um, and, and I guess the reason I've done it should have been changing since, since we made this decision two weeks ago, the schools have now closed for two weeks, and I believe, and I don't have anybody in public school here, but it's my understanding, Michael, you might be able to understand, to help me with this, they were already out of school, closed to Halloween, was that right? Were there some days off?
I, I think that, yes, I think there may have been eight day, whatever.
Because I think that they, that they closed schools from last Wednesday for two weeks till next, to Wednesday, next Wednesday.
That's correct.
But in my reading, I don't think they go back to school until November 2nd, which is that Monday. I mean, I'm thinking that I read something.
I think that's correct.
I think that's what I read when all the school closings came up, and I think I read that, maybe it was even in the Stanley Press, I don't know. But I just want us to be, we are the leaders of the city of Alamo, we are in the middle of a pandemic.
That's on the rise.
That's on the rise. Downtown, we've changed what we're doing downtown, and I commend Joy and I commend Lisa for changing up what we're doing downtown as to not create havoc with 5,000 people downtown. So hopefully what we're doing both the 29th, or the 29th, the 30th, and 31st is good. I just wanted it to, for us to have some discussion on it, what we're doing, if somebody asks, what's the city of Alamo doing? I mean, I know it's not our job, but it is our job to say, be careful. Now, I will tell you, with that said, and then I'm shutting up, I asked, when we made the comment here, I asked that it go on the website, and I know that Lisa has done that about following CDC guidelines and North County DHS guidelines, and she put that on our Facebook, and I appreciate you doing that. I just want, didn't want us to take blind eye to it, so I'm opening it up, just, I just want us to look at that.
Does anybody know in the community, or I know a lot of times church groups have some sort of festivals around, around Halloween, are those still on go and then canceled? Does anybody know? I know there's some drive-throughs, I don't know about anything in person, I can't answer that.
The project, does it?
Yeah, run the trade where they are not.
Does anybody also know, I mean, you know, nobody really wants to, I mean, say it, but I mean, are there any other municipalities that are discouraging people from door-to-door trick-or-treating, or are they kind of leaving it on their own? Does anybody know?
Can't answer that.
The statement that the city said is the city of Alamo is non-sponsored for endorsing trick-or-treating. Now, I'm not going to rant, I may rant, and I like that. When you start out with a sentence like that, it's pretty damned of a fault, we're going to, what we can do as far as the city council.
We have a statement, yeah, I'm going to see if you think that. Well, I know there was a discussion last week about, about PD, it was closed, and the CDC got, CDC got, and I proposed it also. That was a council decision, you look, figure it out.
And that's already been done, that has already been done.
I may be wrong, but I think we doing what we can do from a governmental standpoint, putting, putting the information that guidelines out there, you're gonna, you're gonna ask for a pardon if we try to stop the kids from trick-or-treating.
Okay.
And I know we don't have a target, that's why I think we don't, we, from a governmental standpoint, you know, so.
And I guess the reason is because I've been on that special events committee, okay? And we were doing it on the telephone, because of Zooming, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page. No, I do not want to shut down the one time they can do that, but what I want us to do is to just remind people, um, to be cautious, I mean, thank you.
Number 16, information granted to the Park Recreation for Remote Learning Center, this is Kazi, you want to make some comments?
Um, well, on Wednesday or Thursday, we received word that we were awarded a $31,000 grant from, as part of the CARES Act funding. It came through the YMCA Alliance of North Carolina. I know that other apartment, the total for parking recreation organizations across the state was 2.2 million, the total funding was 19, so 16.8 went to other nonprofits, like the YMCA's and other organizations that are, and it's for remote learning. So it will be used to purchase supplies such as furniture, chrome books, to feed them, they're not feeding the children right now during their shutdown, so, and so that's what it's going to be used for.
Thank you, you want to add anything? Congratulations. Thank you all for looking for that.
But while you're there, remind us, it's the ribbon cutting for the downtown parking is next Thursday at 10 o'clock, right?
That's right.
At, at the side, at the YMCA, at YMCA Park on the First Street side, thanks.
Lisa, I'm always behind.
That's okay.
Um, you're so good at getting grants, maybe you can help the others with their grants if, you know, if they'll ask you.
Absolutely.
Um, because I've seen just all kinds of things that you're doing with grants, and that's apparently successful.
Well, thank you. And also wanted to update you guys on remote learning, we have 21 children that are enrolled right now, so there are 11 elementary school and 10 middle schoolers. And just a shout out to whoever, whoever's listening, we are looking for staff for that, so the position is up on the website. So, thank you.
Come around, Taylor, Mr. Ferris.
Just one item, I think I advised council at the end of last week about the essentials of municipal government offered for the UNC Chapel Hill School of Government. It will be conducted online December 15th and 16th, and it does include access to the state ethics training that everyone who is newly elected or re-elected, whatever the case may be, will have to take prior to about 112 months following the election. So there's access to that, and it is, I think it provides the link, we've covered the agenda, there's a lot of basic review information regarding local government activities, finances, role responsibilities, that sort of thing. So with that all said, if anybody is interested in, they call it preregistrating, preregistration, so how we can register anybody, I, I'm wondering, I've not seen it for sure, but I'm almost wondering if there's been preregistration at this point, knowing that some people may have to back out or change plans following the election. So, but anybody that's interested at this point, we can certainly register them and make any changes that are needed.
I do.
That's it.
Ms. Hughes?
Uh, has the police seen, did you get a chance to speak to staff at Ford, by chance?
Uh, yes, I did. I sent an email out to, I think Kevin had sent me the contact information. Didn't hear anything for a week, so I traveled down there and actually found some pictures in the parking lot, which happened to be Miss, probably a thing, 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 there you go. And she was on vacation, she said, I want to be back for another week, she said, but we're very interested in having you come speak to our group of students. She said that probably every August and every January, until we can get everybody in the class. Very appreciative, and looking forward to having us come speak to them about that. So have, have a chance to ask about the blue phone, but we will in the coming coming.
How's that for those, as Martha Sussa's people listening, how's the, what is the blue phone and how would that work?
Well, basically, it's just a phone you can run into, pick up, and it goes right to 911. Now, everyone carries a cell phone these days, so I think, I think it's, it's placed there just for the folks that maybe won't have a cell phone. So where it may be not practical for us, it may be for someone that does not have a phone.
It may be not for children, so a lot of campuses want to keep them on campus regardless.
Right.
But there's a couple over on the community college.
Right.
They may not hold one down there, but I, I'm assuming they have some on my campus, I don't know. No, I'm not sure, but I think.
I'm not sure.
Well, you follow, that'll be part of the conversation, but thank you for following up, I appreciate your work on that.
Sure.
That's all.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, the only thing I've gotten there, I did receive a thank you card from some of the residents over at the College Park subdivision, if you don't mind, they asked me to read this, says, here are city council members, we want to thank you for working with us on the horse issue at the edge of College Park subdivision. You are all of great help, and the issues are now handled. We've enjoyed our yard, pool, and welcomed you to the neighborhood this past spring and summer. It is remarkable difference from last summer. Thanks again, we appreciate your help, and it's a hand in life, my word. Always good to pass on here to you.
That's fine. Earl? Yes, sir. Ms. Hughes?
Um, not even thinking, we got a dress right, right now, I think today is the first day of loose leaf season, correct? But maybe a year or two, whenever all the angle parking is fully utilized by the parking students, how are we going to handle when we've got some of the residents that blowing, blowing all the leaves out to the road and taking up three and four parking spots? I noticed that this afternoon in a few different locations, and I said, is it not a problem now, but going forward, we may have to rethink like that.
And that is, well, actually, it isn't a problem, we've had to go, ask them to move some in different locations because they take a half the road. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Um, okay.
Ms. Lively?
Well, I'm still concerned about these guys that keep mentioning jurisdiction of the fire trucks. I think we should, somebody should get with the county manager and discuss what it would take. I mean, we may have to pay, or they may have to pay us, but so that we can work that out of the cost, I mean, we've lost lives for cause of it.
We have mutual aid where we pay three fire parks, Pierre, four?
It's three.
Three, three fire parks, and we have mutual aid with them. The thing is, you can't, they have to request us to come, we can't just automatically go, unless Pierre Tifrit is able to change that agreement in some way, or a volunteer wants us to automatically respond. Right now, we can't automatically respond, as he told you earlier, we just have to do what our agreement says, which is respond upon their request.
Well, I might be what you want, you need to look at the agreement.
I think, I think he's in the process of talking to the, through the county fire association?
It's through the county fire chiefs association, so we're actually planning on a lot of different things, but we have to take it step by step and order to make sure.
Totally understand, thank you. Earl, you want to, the time?
I didn't understand that way.
Okay.
Not the way.
Yeah, he is working on it. Anything further?
No.
That's all.
Um, so I'll go back to what I thought we were putting on there as an agenda item, but I may, I may have misunderstood, but you'll have in front of you customary home occupation, something that was handed out by Kevin earlier, signs at the bottom. The reason you have it in your hand is that must have been either Thursday or Friday, I was asked with all of the political signs out on the post yards, why a person at their home with home occup, an occupation, that they have their business located not in their home, but on their property, why they couldn't have a sign that looked like campaign signs in their yard that talked about their business. So I just sent that to Kevin, and I was just the messenger, just the messenger, and sent it to Kevin and to Michael, and they got back with me and said it was part of the ordinance, it was not something new, that it, that it was part of an ordinance. And then I started thinking, and, and so funny, I was thinking about it on one way, and Mr. Ferris was thinking about it a different way, and Mr. Ferris said, I was thinking that a lot of folks right now are working from their home, you know, whether it's, they moved home for whatever reason, there's going to be, there's a lot of people working from home. There may be more home occupations going on now and in the future than we've ever had. And, and Mr. Ferris said, well, we don't, in his, in his writing to me, basically said, you know, it's not that we want to keep people from doing that, but we don't want commercial signs sort of in residential areas. And I guess I'm looking at it, we all know that there's going to be moving forward probably more people working from home, whether it's home occupations or not. I just wanted it to be out there, and whenever they send it to me, I said, council just needs to hear it, it's one of those things that we have as an ordinance. Um, and a private person asked me, they said, you know, I got, it got taken up at my own house, if you can put these campaign signs out there. So I just wanted you all to know about this, and it's something that we have with the ordinance. So where is, where, I mean, for quick, where is that in here? Kevin, is the sign, the, the sign that was incorrect, where, where is that in here?
You have to go to the, there's a table, there are definitions in here, and they do, it does differentiate between campaign signs, which are exempt, there's specific size on those, they can be, and they're allowed for, at least three days after the election is over, but those are a separate item, and they are kind of protected because of that. You go to page 14, you've got uses there, clearly the only kind of signs that would be allowed in residential district would be a conditionally used permit kind of thing, or a daycare, a school, something like that, bed and breakfast, those types of things, churches, libraries, doctors' offices, those would be allowed in a, in a R O neighborhood only. So, yes, the home occupation is, is, yeah, there's a lot of them, but they're really supposed to be secondary, it's supposed to be a home office for the most part, you don't have a lot of customers, you don't have to advertise, it is still a residence, you can conduct some of your business there. And we've always, we've always interpreted it that way.
And so I followed up with the person that asked me and sent that person this information, and they were fine with it, but I just knew if I had been asked that, that you other folks maybe asked that as well, so.
Totally, that Kevin, just one question, on page 11, it says, for special promotion signs, that people pay a sign for $50, $15. Do people actually pay that, or is this verbiage that we got in the order?
Yes.
Um, yeah, we do, we do the temporary, temporary signs for commercial businesses and such, and they can, they can pay for those, and most of all goes up, isn't, isn't in keeping with what, in the ordinance anyway.
I'll finish up, continue up, back, a couple of weeks ago, I think we got an email from Cindy giving us the opportunity to take a fiduciary responsibility, of course, that school of government does occasionally, and it's been a long time since I've known them to do it. I think we were.
I think we were each sent the opportunity to do it, I signed up for it, and, um, someone from local government commission was one of the speakers, as well as, um, someone from the school of government. Um, it was a little bit slow for part of it, but the handout, I asked them to send me a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, they did that, and I forwarded to Cindy so that she could make copies for each of you. Um, talks about our fiduciary responsibility, it was so funny to listen to them, the majority of problems coming from, I'm not sure if it was the, which of the two speakers said this, but the, the majority of the problems come from internal controls, and they spoke at length about that. So, again, we know that the auditor works for us, because ultimately it's us, and they get, work with Colleen and her office, but they actually, it comes to us to audit report. But it was just good, the timing of it, and, uh, I think Cindy's got the copy of, um, the, um, I think she did, Cindy, let me know if you can.
I might need to, I think I saw a link, but not the actual PowerPoint.
Okay, feel free to get back with me on that, I'll make sure that we can somehow get that. Um, a shout out to Ross, um, I've had a folks call me about, or no, emailed me on the city email, um, woman that I did not know, asking me about a specific area of why this particular road, the street they live on was in such bad shape, and I just forwarded it to Ross and to, to Michael, and Ross, um, within a very short amount of time answered that lady, and I got out of the middle of it, but he took care of it. To that end, um, and I was just checking my text, because this came to me via text, earlier today, we talked about power bill funding and how it's going away. Um, in 2015, we were at, there is a service street that Ross says is the second worst street in the city. In 2015, the type of servicing that particular, that particular street needs, uh, would have cost $14,000, okay? Very short street, and the particular kind of paving that it needs would be about $20,000 now. I check, I, and it's a, it is probably, it's the worst, second worst street in the city, he says, and it's one of the shortest streets out there, but, um, you know, a few people live on it, but the woman came to us, and I think you might have been standing right beside of me whenever she asked me about that, so I made a phone call right then about it, or a text and have gotten that. I would say to myself, here with the council, that is something we can never, we cannot overlook, we've got to figure out a way to do these streets. Um, if it's gone up 25% in five years, then we gotta do something about that moving forward. The goals conference, I'm, I don't know if anybody else, oh, I do know, Chris was on, Chris Whitten was on that.
Who's on the commercial fiduciary?
You're on, both on, we're both on the back, just that one, okay. So you're on that one. Um, the goals, the league had their, um, times to look at potential goals to use for the general assembly next year, and, um, I know that Michael sent in a potential goal for a quarter cent sales tax for transportation, I actually articulated that on the call, and the funny thing was, there are some municipalities that are asking for a half cent sales tax, here are just for, just for transportation, which would then go toward paving and that type of thing for our roads. So, note that there are some folks out there that are even a little bit tighter than we are, or saying that they want more. Um, and I, I'll finish it up with the issues that I asked to have on the agenda, of course, therapy issue, we've already talked about, um, the public housing, the fire, um, that got into our weekly report, um, the Waddell Center, it's in our weekly report, and again, some of these things folks in the community have asked me about, and I'll say, well, just listen to the meeting. Um, HVAC is finished, but the windows painted, where did we say that was?
So, so there is a shortage of at least 25% of staff in parks for maintenance, so we, we started looking at staff versus contracting that out to determine what's best, what's most efficient, and what's most cost effective.
So.
To make a decision. So we don't have a timeline for that, it's a mid-range goal for the department, so more information to come. I believe Dexter initially asked that question, and Lisa has been communicating with him about that.
Okay, very good. And again, when things are asked at meetings, people that don't even know anything about it, hear it, and they, then they see us on the street and say, well, what did you do about this? Well, I didn't know.
So is the parks and reg, is that because of COVID?
Oh, no. No, it's because of just, uh, voluntary or attrition, voluntary attrition.
Okay. I didn't know, I thought, ooh, maybe it's COVID related.
And the, the next question I think was auto zoning, I know that, have we seen, and I can't, I know it was sent to us in our weekly report too, about the auto zone problem behind it with the flooding, and Michael, we, did I understand correctly, we haven't had any more flooding, but we haven't had any big rains since that last one, is that right?
Right, the one thing I can say is that, I would support the evidence, of course, we saw them do the work, but the one factor that would show that things aren't moving along is some of the backup, uh, was constant on our property, which is the public housing property.
Right.
That issue was no longer there.
Very good.
So, we have not had the significant rain either, but, uh, all signs point to improvement.
Very good. And to that, I had asked, um, because folks are asking me, now that we are able to move the debris from the right-of-way, since we started that in June, what is our cumulative total of tonnage that has been moved?
What is the portion of ninety tons?
Okay, we may have it on our weekly reports, Chris.
Yeah, we do.
But the community is asking me, people in the community are asking me, so how many tons are out there, and I just want them to be able to know that. And I don't, and that's the reason I asked it to be put on the agenda, because I had folks say to me, now that y'all are doing it, how many tons have you, and how much was it?
Maybe it was ninety.
Hundred and eighty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty tons.
Ninety tons.
So ninety tons has been removed from our right-of-ways of our streams, the right-of-ways,
or the, the right-of-way areas since June, ninety tons. Um, and let's see, charter free, we talked about, Halloween, we talked about, employee manual, we talked about, and I do believe that's it.
Mr. Brammer?
Uh, always talk about signage. I got, I got a confession to make, so, with all this signage, the last time I voted, I came out of the booth and realized I had voted for mosquito authority and two real (laughing). Let's, let's talk about a couple of real good things. Last Friday morning, the Board of Trustees of Pfeiffer University met for the first time ever in Albemarle. Now, I wish all of you could have been there and experienced that, the, the spirit that was evident among those people, both faculty, faculty, staff, administration, and visitors, the boards of trust, board of trustees members from all over the southeast were there, and it was just an incredible happening, you know, as I say, I wish all of you could have experienced that. And I think in many ways, that spirit has, is imbuing the city, and you've heard me talk about the Pfeiffer thing, I don't reuse it any time, but it's still in effect. Um, I have breakfast with a real estate agent very often, and it is unbelievable what's happening in the real estate business in Albemarle. Uh, houses don't stay on the market any length of time, uh, people are beating above, uh, these prices. Uh, I saw one of my neighbors out putting up a mailbox the other day, I went out to speak to him, he had, uh, the house I know went on the market at eight o'clock one morning, and by eleven o'clock, they had several bids, and he bought it, and he is from, what, a big city in New York, and he told me that, uh, he cannot stand it up there any longer, and he also told me how very happy he was living here in Albemarle. So, I think these good things, I just think we all feel, should feel proud of what's going on, and, and I hope that these are harbingers of things to come, as, as Pfeiffer gets more and more into us, and, and we become, take on the persona of this academic village, and, uh, the other kinds of things that Keith is going to be working on, I, I just, I feel awfully good about our town, and I hope you share that, that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, on your time mentioned, we're doing the closed sections pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, five, and six for real estate and personal matters. Question by Councilwoman Roberts. Thank you by Councilwoman Lauer for the discussion. I would, I would thank you to ask.
Bye.
All folks, I'm going to carry you.